We have nine and I think.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. Our mission is to prepare all of our students to lead lives of joy and purpose as knowledgeable, creative, and compassionate citizens of a global society. The board is an elected unpaid group of 10 citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves a right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We hope our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community. Thank you for attending. Mr. Bolden, would you?
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 1046, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Packet, and the Times on January 6, 2022, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time, as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer, shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button, also at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, as more specifically designated in NJSA 18A 388.1. In the event that the statute is amended, the law should take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions. Would you like me to take the role?
Yes, Mr. Bolden. Thank you.
Daphne Kendall?
Here.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder? Patsy Baglio?
Here.
Beth Barron?
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Here.
Jean Durbin?
Present.
Mara Franceschi?
Here.
Brian McDonald?
Present.
Susan Cantor?
Here.
Rob Christopher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, Mr. Bolden. So I think tonight is your night to discuss the budget 2223 development.
Great. Thank you. So let me just, someone want to filibuster a quick second? We were just have to find it on, open it up. So tonight is when we start talking about our first preliminary presentation on the budget.
And thank you to Brian McDonald for letting us know our meeting started at seven and not 7:30. Thank you, Brian.
Give me a second. So.
We do have something, Matt, if you need some time to find it. Elizabeth has that video.
Although unfortunately, I think it's on Matt's desktop, so no pressure to do it right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we were going to start off that actually. Thanks for reminding me, Dr. Kelly.
But Matt, I can explain a little bit what it is. It's just a short little video Valentine from Community Park this week that they wanted to share. The CP students did handwritten notes of gratitude to their teachers, and they said things like, "Thank you for helping me master multiplication last year, even though it was extra hard with COVID-19." And they sent these handwritten notes to their teachers and also put them up on the bulletin boards. And I just wanted to do a little, I wanted to thank Principal.
Sorry. Keep going, Elizabeth.
And a little shout out to a school psychologist, Liz Marmo, and school counselor Liz Cameron, who coordinated this project. So.
Thank you. Now I'm going to share. Excellent.
Thanks for showing that. I know the teachers at CP did a great job and really deserved that praise. So thank you, Matt.
Thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you for bearing with me. All right. So welcome to 2223 Budget Workshop. Brief outline of what we're going to talk about tonight. We'll go over Statement of Values, a little bit about zero-based budgeting and what that means. The 2223 Budget Calendar. We'll talk a little bit about school taxes and overview of how they work and potential tax impacts. We'll talk about our operating budget and preliminary budget analysis. And of course, we will open up to questions from the board member first, board members first, and then the public. All right. So as a district, we want to reach out regardless of race, religion, country of origin, economic status, sexual identity, gender, gender identity, or learning differences. To fully reach their potential, we want to be a school district where systemic bias or racism quite simply cannot be found. We know that this is immense in scope and know we have a lot of work ahead of us, but we are committed to this work. We're in the process now transitioning to starting a new strategic plan. We have accepted proposals, and hopefully we'll be awarding those at the next board meeting. Our strategic plan effectively ended on June 31st, June 30th, 2021, with Dr. Kelly coming on board. So we're looking forward to that process, entering into that process again. Just going to briefly go over a little bit about zero-based budgeting and really what it means. Just basically the idea, I don't have to read this in front of us. However, the idea is instead of simply, you know, attaching percentage increases year to year, we try to get our budget managers throughout the district to build up their budget based on what they need each year and really analyzing those closely and therefore justifying the expenses that they are going to make in the next year. What makes Princeton Public Schools unique? Well, there are a lot of things. Clearly, we do have a world-class university right in our backyard. We have small schools, especially at the elementary level, with generally comparative small class sizes compared to our peers. We have a large, wide number of student programs and opportunities. We have a lot of services, support services in our community. We have a very experienced teaching staff. Our programs are well above the state minimum. And we do have a higher percentage of our population, which is navigating poverty, especially poverty, I'm sorry, compared to many of the highly performing affluent districts in the state. We also, as another comparison to those communities, we have a 424 student charter school in our town. And we also are very committed to equity. So the budget calendar is really based off the state calendar, which doesn't change all that much. We're, you know, right in the middle, right in the heart of budget season. We started in November, pushing out centrally out to our budget managers, what we were expecting from them. They then spent, you know, November into, right up leading into winter break, entering in their details into System 3000. We've been in the middle of central office, you know, analyzing. Dr. Kelly and I spent a lot of time this year with our individual budget managers. We did budget meetings. Dr. Foster did join us for many of those. You know, I think it was helpful certainly for Dr. Kelly the first year, just to see a lot of the different things and types of requests that we were getting. So tonight, highlighted in yellow is our Budget Workshop, which is a top level overview. One of the things that I was tasked with, you know, when I started here just over two years ago, was, you know, trying to build a budget model in such that we really analyzed our financial results in more detail. So we developed a five-year historical budget model, focusing on the current and then looking going forward at least three years into the future to try to manage our resources better. Coming up in two weeks from today is Governor Murphy's Budget Address. We do have a board meeting that night as well. On two days later, by statute, he is required to publish state aid numbers. So by Thursday, usually midday. Sometimes lately, it's been a little earlier. We are hearing some different messaging coming out of Trenton possibly. I think that the election in November was a little bit of a surprise. His opponent seemed to gain a lot of traction. So, you know, we've been hearing rumors that despite the recent increases in state aid, although they don't affect Princeton greatly, as you kind of see as we go through some of the nuts and bolts of our budget, there is talk that he is looking to kind of freeze those increases again and focus more on, you know, maintaining smaller increases in property taxes. But that's, at this point, is just hearsay and rumor. March 15th, that leads up to March 15th, which is six weeks from tonight, our tentative budget adoption comes up quickly. So then by that Friday, we're required to submit our budgets to the, essentially the county, but the county employees are employees of the state. So it's really a state review through the county executive superintendent and mostly the executive business official at the county. We do have our own now in Mercer County. As one thing that Governor Murphy has done over the last four years is fully staffed the state. There used to be many county BAs that would be covering three counties at a time. And then we'll have the in-between. So that's the tentative budgeted option on March 15. And then on April 26, we have our budget hearing. And that's where we're going to adopt our final budget. So we like to look at comparatively our county year taxes here, and it's two identical pieces of the pie. The taxpayer in this community, just under half of the taxes that they pay will go to the school district, 30% to the county, which is typical in counties in the state that have, New Jersey being mostly a suburban state. The counties that have urban centers such as Jersey City, Newark, which are obviously larger than Trenton, will pay a higher percentage of their taxes to the county. The municipal percentage is right at 20%. And then there's open space taxes at 1%. And it is, was, 21 versus 20 was the same percentage of there. So the general. The school tax levies broke up into two pieces. Our general fund levy, which is our annual operating budget. We talk a lot about the state law subjecting to 2% tax levy caps. There are waivers for enrollment and possible healthcare cost increases. Those healthcare cost increases have been frozen for a number of years. It is indexed to the state healthcare plan, which is a large self-insured plan, but they have lost enrollment over the last decade. But they have maintained either decreases or really decreases the last, I think, four years. So they're on a calendar year, their plan, whereas our plan renews on July 1. So there's no healthcare waivers available for the current year. In fact, the law that was passed over a year ago called Chapter 44, which created the New Jersey Employees Health Benefit Plan, there is potentially a little bit of a mandated cap on taxes, but they're still collecting data from the state. We have almost 600 school districts in this state, and about 10% of those had not reported that data. So it was kind of a Sweeney, a former state senator Sweeney, who held a lot of power in the state, and Governor Murphy and the teachers' union had agreed on this new plan as an attempt to try to keep healthcare cost increases in check. So they're trying to calculate potentially what that savings is if there was a savings throughout the state. I know that many of, many of our peers, many of my fellow business administrators have actually complained that the new plan has cost them more. For us, it's been about break even. So that's the general fund, the operating levy, as we say, speak of. That's about 93% of our budget in 2021-22, which is the current budget year. We're working on our 2223 budget. The debt service levy is the other half. That funds our long-term. That's our capital budget. Anything that we pay out of there is approved by taxpayers via referendum. So currently, we have three maturities and another one, which we will be going to market with in, potentially on March 10, which should be the bond sale for the 2022 referendum, $17.451 million. That was passed on, just passed on January 25. It was passed by a 76% margin. So as you can see highlighted here, one of the important things we can see is that, so we just paid off last week, in fact, last Tuesday, $4.2 million of principal relating to refunding bonds issued in 2009. And next February 1, another piece of that bond will be paid off. I just want to mention that we did go through a debt review. I think it was in between budgets. It was just after the last budget year. We had some help from Operations Co-Chair Brian McDonald, our financial advisor, Brian Morris, myself, who was a fairly intense process with Moody's. And we were, Princeton was able to maintain, Princeton School District was able to maintain our AAA debt. We do issue most of our debt at 20 years, which is conservative fiscally speaking. You don't want to issue debt for longer than the projects that you are funding. So. This is a going out four years. The first column on the left shows our current estimated net debt service. Then it shows our estimated fiscal 23. So this would be the budget that we're working on now, estimated net debt service. So that's net of debt service aid. The current referendum, the, we were awarded 34%. Technically speaking, the state awards 40%. It does provide some confusion, especially on the referendum question, which we're legally supposed to, we have to put the 40%, but the state does prorate that. So they prorate the 40% by 85%. So when the state is not able to fund things, they tend to prorate them. So we were awarded the full 34% of principal and interest on this next bond to be issued in about a month. So this is based on those estimates now at 2.5%. That has ticked up. The bond markets did settle down last week, but you know, all the media is talking about is inflation. So it looks like we will be paying slightly higher percentage than we initially hoped. But as you can see, there is declining debt going forward. This assumes no further issuance of debt in addition to the $17.451 million referendum just passed. And then it sort of flattens out the fiscal 26 moving forward. It flattens out to about that $2 million in net debt service. So I'd like to look historically. So the difference between the town, the town is on a calendar year where their year end is December 31. We're on a June 30 year end. So our fiscal year is different from the state. So the calendar tax levy is made up of both half of the previous year and half of the next year. So the counter 22 tax rate, you know, gets adjusted. Most of us will get those notices in the mail, which show that difference. One of the positives we can see here is over the two years, it's 0.941% growth rate in the school district part of the, the school tax levy, as we like to call it. So that's good. A little bit more about taxpayer impact in the discussion. Our actual, actual calendar school tax levy for 21 was 86.492 million. That tax rate is, the effective tax rate is a little lower. Our actual tax base, our net assessed valuation, or quote unquote ratables, was 7.21 billion, which was a slight increase from the prior year. So our tax base did increase 15 basis points from 20 to 21, which mean that tax levy that we assess, that's paid through your, paid through the town, is shared across a slightly greater total assessed value. So this means that, this meant that a 1.61% calendar school year tax levy increase results in a 1.52% effective school tax increase. It's spread across a larger base. So this, this shows over the last six years, the difference between the Princeton Public Schools tax levy, actual tax levy increase versus that effective tax rate increase there. Although the ratables did increase, as I just mentioned, from 2021, that rate of growth has been declining, which is typical. You have longer-term trends that play into rising tax bases. So this is a positive thing. It's almost a full 100-point basis point difference between the effective tax increase and the actual tax levy increase over the last six years. We won't have an estimate from the tax assessor for at least another week or two. He's great. He gets back to me right away and kind of shows me the preliminary right up to the, to the final, when he gets it, what those ratables will be. Right here, we're looking at, we're comparing our general fund or operating fund tax levy growth over the years. This is going, looks like about nine years now with the projected, to the right is our projected 2223 operating tax levy increase. The red is our, in our, our enrollment numbers, that had been trending up significantly. We can see that drop-off from fiscal June 30th, 20, to June 30th, 21. Those are our actual average daily enrollments as reported at the end of the school year. That 3714 number is our current enrollment. So it's not our final. The final number could be a little higher. We have seen, so enrollment's been ticking up, especially after winter break in many of our schools. And this number is projected, you know, to go back to where we were. It's only a projection. It could go higher or lower. So that's what a projection is. So this is a, I guess what you call a donut chart, but it shows the breakout or what percentage of our tax levy was attributed to, you heard me discuss a little earlier about, you know, we have a 2% tax levy. So just about two-thirds of our tax levy growth over the last eight years was attributed to just the regular 2% tax levy without any waivers to get us above that number. We did experience, we were able to take management enrollment tax levy increases earlier in the, from 2016 to 2019. We did take advantage of close to 4 million enrollment tax levy increases. And then just very small amount of this total, less than 10% was for health care increases above that 2%. So our banked tax cap analysis, we did tax the last two fiscal years below 2%, and we were able to bank some, some tax levy. And then, as you can see by this chart, so if we created in fiscal 21, just over a quarter million dollars, it is then available for three years. As you can see, so fiscal 24, the amount that we created in fiscal 21 would expire if you did not use it. By then, it would expire. Same with this 796. We were able to keep taxes well last year, partly due to some positive financial results from, from COVID, some using a small percentage of the federal grant money to help offset current year expenses. But we are projected to need that banked cap in this year's budget. So the last column here, I just like to talk about. So people sometimes will mistake, not mistakenly, but I should say overstate the foregone tax levy, which is just the compounding effect. So if in, if in effect, we had put this 253 into the budget, we, since we banked it, we just lose a small piece of that due to the compounding effect. So the total amount is very small. So we want to start to look at our actual results. This pie chart shows that here in this community, 85% of our, our operating budget is paid for locally. 86%, I'm sorry, 85% plus the 1% in these other small miscellaneous category is paid for locally. State aid is 8%, which also does include the annual extraordinary aid related to our special ed award that is filed around more of the each year. And then 6% comes from tuition from Cranberry. This 1% is miscellaneous and other tuition. The other tuition is mostly from employees who choose to send their students here for a reduced tuition rate. So let's start to dig into what I was speaking to before, looking back five years on our actual results on this, on our revenue side of the operating budget. If we want to look at some of the changes, we can see where, where this is where the banked cap would come into our revenue side. Whenever actual, we have our adopted budget, which does include forced fund balance. The state of New Jersey requires school districts to only maintain 2% of their fund balance. It did increase to 4% during COVID. We're not sure if that's going to stay. It should, should clarify 2% or 4% of the operating budget. And then excesses above those other fund balances. So then they take the amount that you've already budgeted, they exclude that, and then funds that you put into capital reserve are excluded from that. And then you are forced each year to budget excess fund balances. So the state made us budget $3.3 million in the current fiscal year, fiscal 22, into the budget. We don't plan, we try to balance our budget, right? We want to each year, you know, we're not here to bank money. We are here to educate our students as efficiently and as thoroughly as, as we can. So we want to create a budget each year that is balanced. So when we start looking now at our, our fiscal 23 budget in this last column, this is what our projected actual, our estimated, projected, actual revenue numbers would look like. One of the things you may note here, and I've talked about it each year, is that we budget less than in extraordinary aid than we anticipate. One of the positives in the state. One of the positives um in the state budget uh was that they've increased uh their extraordinary aid numbers by um over a hundred percent um from fiscal nineteen to fiscal twenty two. This state went from a hundred ninety five thousand dollar, a hundred ninety five million dollars to four hundred million dollars um at the state level. And we were able to um in fiscal twenty one, get back from the state three, just over three million dollars. Um, so I work hard um on developing a model that um maximizes not only our out of district tuitions. It's based on a, a fairly complex, not, not complex, but three levels of categories. I'm not going to go into it, but um so you're able to charge off um out of district tuitions over a certain amount of money. And you are also able to um charge internal um students. Uh, we have uh many self-contained programs uh for our students. Um, clearly, uh the smaller the class, the higher the cost of educating the students. So we're able to charge that back through extraordinary aid each year. Um, we are hoping, um, and one of the biggest things I'm looking to see um in two weeks, about two weeks, uh two weeks and a day or two, is that the state holds, at least holds at that four hundred million dollar level. Typically, they don't take back that um money, but I'm uh, you know, anxious to see. So our estimated actual number here is uh, you know, is higher. Um, before I was estimating about one uh one and three quarters million dollars. Um, you know, so it is an important part of our budget, certainly. Um, the rest of the state that we get um for and at just about four and a half million dollars. Um, miscellaneous and interest. Um, like I said, tuitions, cranberries is ninety four percent of this number, this uh five million dollar number. And um that's the revenue side. What we're looking at right now is uh going back historically and then uh prospectively as well. Um, this is the expense side um of the ledger. Um. So uh our initial forecast or actual uh fiscal twenty one uh was in excess uh of revenue over um expenses. It, um, this does not include encumbrances. Encumbrances are carried over. At the end of the year, there were a little more than five hundred uh and seventy five thousand dollars uh that's carried over. It's a piece of fund balance. Um, it's in our uh our income statement that we look at. Really, what we focus on is in the CAFR is a six-page uh budget, the actual statement, uh the C one schedule. It's in every year's, uh actually, they change the name of the CAFR to the ACF, so I'm going to try to keep saying ACF. Um, it's the annual comprehensive financial report. Um, we are looking, um, so as you can see here, so our adopted revenues um from the previous page in the budget, it's a balanced budget, um because you force the fund balance in there. So revenues, less expenditures in the state budget would equal zero. Um, our estimated actual expenses this year, um it looks like uh we're gonna have a uh surplus at this point. It is a little early in the year. We are just over halfway through uh the year. We are um self-insured on the RX side and uh we are um privately insured on the medical side. So um, some of these things aren't known. Um, we certainly um were estimated to spend a lot more this year on fixing our facilities and maintenance on the operating side of the budget. We really have made that a focus. Um, and then the final column is our preliminary uh budget. We have our salaries. Um. Benefits, we won't know. Um, I have a meeting with our health insurance broker on Friday to go over our six-month uh medical claims. Uh, like I said, we're privately insured through Horizon. Uh, we switched to Horizon this year from Aetna. Um, Horizon did give us a zero percent rate increase um fiscal twenty two versus fiscal twenty one. But because we're new with them, they don't go over our actual claims. Um, one of the things uh with on the private insurance side, uh so if we, if our claims rise up, we get a much higher renewal the next year. So one of the things we've been um looking at and had presentations on as a uh operations committee is the possibility of uh going to a fully self-insured model similar to the state. We're on uh the smaller side, um but it is certainly uh feasible with our amount of lives that we ensure. So that is one possibility we're always looking at. Um. Fund balance analysis. So this fiscal one number is an audited number. Um, uh, remember that says of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty one. So we did uh spend a significant um amount of money uh this past summer uh through capital reserve. We were able to um put a new uh HVAC system um at our pool at Princeton Middle School. Um, that was um a little over nine hundred thousand dollars. We did um some uh minor roof work at the high school on a shingle roof. Uh, we also were able to augment um the referendum with uh putting in nine additional Airedales and a smaller rooftop unit this past summer. Um. And the other cost um that's forecasted to uh, so this is our fiscal, this is what we're estimating at the end of this year. As you can see, uh, it's going to drop down. And this does include adding back some of our uh fiscal two thousand twenty one funds uh in capital reserve each year. If you notice, um, I know the board does, especially the operations committee that we pass a resolution at the end of the year, allowing us to allocate a certain amount of our fund balance um into capital reserve um or maintenance reserve. I do uh maintenance reserve is in this quote unquote uh free fund balance uh number. Um, the maintenance reserve. So once, once funds are put into capital reserve, no matter uh what happens in the school district, the only thing you're allowed to use that for is capital reserve. Um, that's by statute. So um, that's why we call the rest of it, you know, we're quote unquote free fund balance. You're able to do more with it. It's not uh restricted. Um, so we have two um categories in our fund balance. We have capital reserve and maintenance uh reserve. We just started doing the maintenance reserve, I think, in fiscal twenty uh the first uh year that I was here at the uh I started just in the beginning part of fiscal twenty uh the late summer of two thousand nineteen. So we did start a maintenance reserve fund. And at the last um operations committee meeting, I believe we're going to be taking out um a little bit from the maintenance reserve to uh to fix our rooftop ladders at the high school. Um, I think the estimate was um sixty thousand dollars. No, I'm sorry, thirty nine thousand four hundred seventy dollars. Um, so that's the first time that we've uh utilized uh managed reserve for uh anything since I've been here. Um. Computers freezing a little, so bear with me. Um. So this shows um two thousand and twenty one, this should say, not two thousand twenty. Thought I fixed that earlier. Apologies on that. It does say it down here. I'll fix that. Um, and it really the clear um picture here, I think, is, is um that seventy nine percent of our expenses go towards salaries and benefits. Um, it's the most important thing uh to look at in a school district budget, you know, salaries are recurring, um benefits are recurring. Um, and then if you add in our charter school expenses, um it goes up to uh about eighty um six percent. Eighty seven percent, sorry. I think that's the biggest takeaway here. Um, this is looking at a longer term trend um and talking about those same drivers, salary benefits and charter expenses um where they've um been going. Um, they are flattening out a little bit. Um, clearly, um if we can um control those expenses, uh that really drives the budget. Um, it is a positive trend um with some slight increases um coming. I just want to drill down a little closer into the same budget model. Um, looking at um the year of year uh cranberry tuitions um have been going up and down. There was some uh declining uh enrollment coming from Cranberry. Um, obviously, uh, you know, these types of things are cyclical, um so they go up and down. Uh, last year it was uh significantly lower than the previous year's actual number. And um so we're estimating right now this five point four million dollars in tuitions. That does include some internal uh tuitions paid by employees uh for their students to attend the schools here. Um. So we're looking at the uh expense side, drawing it a little closer. Um. You know, I spoke here about um spending a lot on fixing our facilities. Um, we've been able to uh maintain our transportation expenses. Uh, I just, you know, want to give a shout out to our transportation director. Uh, there is a shortage of labor all over um this country really, but specifically uh one of those uh is related to bus drivers. We were able to work with our uh contracted service provider. Um, so we're able to limit the number of routes this year, which did save us some money, um which was very helpful to us and both our contractor, who still is facing um labor issues. Um, and we uh split our routes here in the district about fifty fifty between internally run and contracted routes. Um, right now, um, we're looking to balance this, this budget. It's pretty close right now. Um. We need to look at um all our salaries. Um, we need to get our final benefits numbers and uh work from there. So the next six weeks are going to be very busy. Um, balancing this school year's budget. Um, I'd like to open it up to questions. And I can go back and forth um if needed, if any of you want me to pull up anything, but um questions from the board at this point. Um. Uh, Debbie.
Yes, hi. Thank you. Thank you. That was really good. Um, so I noticed the energy costs are going up. And I was curious if some of that is from the new, you know, um HVACs we put in. But I know we're also doing, you know, work with sustainable Princeton, and I know we're putting in the new light bulb, so kind of wondering where we might see some of those savings and what some of the um increase is.
So uh I don't have uh an awesome analysis, as I like to do, on energy, but I know we are paying more for the supply of the energy, but um primarily analyzing, you know, the supply costs are going up. We use um currently use ACES, uh which is a large uh coalition of uh school districts that uh purchase energy together. We're right now floating, although they, they're trying to hedge a little bit, but they weren't able to lock in natural ga- on the natural gas side, weren't able to lock in natural gas rates because of some of the volatility in the markets. So we are paying a little higher on the supply side, but I've been so far pleasantly um pleased with the uh early analysis of the Airedale's efficiency versus the mass amount of window units. I mean, we do know that window units are less efficient, um but you know, those Airedales are much larger. Um, so we, you know, we were curious to see how that's going to pan out with uh, I'm pretty happy so far. But I don't have like an awesome analysis. Actually, you mentioned sustainable Princeton is helping us to come up with. Um, they signed us up for uh a service to be able to better track our energy usage. So um yeah, we don't know um how that's going to continue. Um, we've only had so far one uh bill in this. It got cold, really cold. So our natural gas costs, obviously, you know, they spike up um in the December. You know, like November, December, January, I through February.
Okay, the other thing, um, you know, we were releasing all of the computers. Where do we see the leasing cost?
Uh, in the technology line, um, okay, so it's not an operating lease that we're um, it's not an operating lease that we give them back after five years. I mean, our goal is to get uh six years out of computers, but it was
No, no, I mean, I know we own them, but I know we were financing them.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so that's in the technology number. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Michelle. Hi, hey, Matt, no problem. And I should probably know this, so be kind to me if um it's something that I've missed in the past four years. Um, so our fund balance has doubled since twenty seventeen. And so my question is, A, um, how does that happen? And B, is that where we would look to cover our projected deficit?
So it's a really good, and you know, there are, there are never any bad questions. And, and you did point that out. That's a um, you know, somewhat uh fortuitous that we were able to, we've actually saved money during COVID, but we've been also trying to uh build back our fund balances. I think it's a uh a bigger question, you know, for, you know, for me, for the superintendent, for the, the board, really, as finance, as financial managers. I did allude to going through the, the um dating uh dating debt review with Moody's. And it is interesting in New Jersey, they're looking for a twenty percent of our operating budget, so roughly twenty million dollars to be in of uh that free fund balance portion that we were talking about. And we all felt um certainly um as did uh one of our former board members, that's way too high of a number. So we want to develop that sweet spot, right? Where we feel um, you know, whether it's ten million dollars or, you know, twelve million dollars, whatever that number is, that's a comfortable amount. And, you know, like I said, we're philosophically, I mean, we're not here to make money. We're here to spend the money on our students. We want to tax um conservatively, efficiently, you know, maximize that number, come up that sweet spot. So I think that the fund balance number now, to me, is a number to, you know, try to hold over time. And whether we fluctuate, you know, operating uh results-wise up or down, you know, I've always said our goal, you know, my goal as a financial manager of the district would be, you know, three hundred thousand dollar swing. That's my goal. That's hard to do in a school district with the a hundred million dollar budget. And uh, but that, that's how I view it. So I, I think we're at a really good spot right now. Um, I don't see a tremendous advantage in building up um further. You know, uh a war chest of funds. I mean, I think we want to spend money efficiently on fixing things and adding things. It was just a give and take. Um, I think it was a, a, a little bit of a low, a little too low um at, you know, we were down at that six million dollar number. Um, so it is finding that happy, that happy medium. Um, and then, you know, not overtaxing. Um, some districts can put away, you know, a, a ton of money um over time by overtaxing, you know, we want to find that sweet spot. Um, so I think that's a really, really pertinent question, really uh time-sensitive question, actually, Michelle.
One, one other, just a follow-up. Uh, so when I, when I was a municipal elected official, the state had a lot to say about what we, what we held in, in our surplus. Does the state um intervene or have any um input on, on what that number is?
Yeah, you know, I was talking about that. Statutorily, we're uh allowed uh now during COVID, and we're not a hundred percent sure if that's going to stay at four percent. So that four million dollar number in the free fund balance, which really isn't uh a large cushion for, you know, an entity that's running a hundred million dollar operating budget. Um, and the state uh did in two thousand ten, I believe, um under uh two governors ago. Um. No, I'm sorry, last governor Christie, just two govern- yeah, two governors ago, Governor Christie did go through the state and um take back um unreserved funds from school districts. Um, you know, that affected uh, I, I don't believe they took backs. I'm not sure how much it took from Princeton or not. But um, so the state does have a lot to say about it through their laws. Um. But, but there's a balance too, right? So you don't want to put too much into capital reserve, like I said, because you can never take that back out for anything but capital. Um, so then if you get squeezed on the operating side, you offer, um, you're offered less flexibility in what you could do year to year. Um, you know, right now, the big thing is um inflationary pressure, wage pressure. Um, Debbie brought it up, energy. I know Brian brought it up in the last operating committee meeting. We don't, we're floating right now. Usually we have a fixed rate on um like natural gas will be fixed for usually two or three-year contract. And uh so there are, you know, some fluctuations, but um I think we were in a good spot to be able to absorb those fluctuations over the next few years at least. It's always uh, you know, a constant battle.
Okay, thanks, Matt.
You're welcome. Jean?
Thanks. I, you're, we'll be able to see this presentation later and um, I'm sorry, I'm not good when I just hear it the first time. But the banked cap analysis on slide seven And I'm sorry, I'm not good when I just hear it the first time, but the banked cap analysis on slide 17. Could you explain to me in a couple of sentences what that means and how we use it? Is it, I don't even know if it's a good thing or a bad thing.
So it's one of the mechanisms that was put into place not out, not all that long ago. You know, with the 2% tax cap levy. So it's a way to to reinforce being conservative in raising taxes. So they're not saying, you know, you just had that one shot at the, at the prize, so to speak, right? So if you tax less than the statutory, statutorily maximum amounts, which do include possible healthcare waivers, enrollment waivers that could increase above that 2%. So if you do not use that, you don't lose it right away. You have three subsequent budget years to use it. And last year, we were, you know, the plan was to tax a little lower. We knew we had some maturing debt. So we wanted to be, you know, fair to the taxpayers when we knew the next year with the maturing debt, it gave us a little flexibility on the taxation side, and the district wouldn't lose out. Because when we needed that money, it would be there to tax. If that explains it better.
Thank you.
Just one of those state. The intention was good, I think, from our overall perspective, you know, so so balancing, you know, conservative tax rates with, you know, not forcing people to make decisions where you're going to lose it right away. Beth?
Yeah, thanks, Matt. This was a lot of information, very informative. I appreciate that you took the time to break things down for us and try to show us the trends over time. I was just wondering, you know, to follow up on the banked cap question. So it looks like you did include this year, the almost 1 million in bank capped in this year's as revenue to be used in this year's budget, correct? So that would mean next year we wouldn't have any. So that's a, an item that if you look forward, you're going to use to to get through this year, but next year that's over. And the other thing I noticed was, again, this extraordinary aid that we get from the state, just to emphasize again that that's really an unfunded mandate or an underfunded mandate. It's it's money that they owe us, that they say by law they should be paying us 100%. And in the past, they've only paid 50%, 51%. Suddenly, they, in the two years ago, they suddenly put some money in there and we got what, 60% or something or 55%? I mean, it went up.
This last year, so it, the the awards of this year's budget, which we'll be clearly watching very closely for a lot of reasons in two weeks, in a couple of days when they come out with it, will actually fund, the state does a lot of things like this that they, that 23 state budget will be funding our current year, our 22. We're on the same fiscal year as the state. So it was a little bit of a, you know, they do a lot of one year kind of budget fixes at the state. So that that will, but it will be telling to see that they're going to continue, you know, moving forward that so we can kind of, you know, at least somewhat count on that, but it is not 100% given. It's based on a lot of factors if.
And they, so they propose, you're assuming they may fund up to, what is the percentage now that they are actually going to fund that you're?
We got to 91% of our submitted award, you know. I work very closely with Mickey on that. I basically handle the internal calculations, which are kind of in depth and take a lot of time. And she handles her, her people handle, I should say, probably.
I appreciate that. I remember when you came and you brought us that expertise and that was super helpful.
It is a zero sum game. It's funny, people have asked me for my my spreadsheets and I kind of just try to like play it off. Like, you know how you didn't want to share family recipe? It's like if I share my family recipe, then we get less cake. So, but.
Well, we appreciate you have a good recipe there. But I just want to note, you know, for the big picture, thinking about looking forward, you're, we're making it through this year by adding in a million of bank cap, which is really a one time thing, and then it goes away. And then we're also, we are, it looks like we went, normally, we would estimate about 700,000 in extraordinary aid, and you have about two point. You've gone up to like 2.7 million or something. It's a much bigger number that you're putting there as estimated revenue from the extraordinary aid. So I just want to notice those are two big drivers that have shifted this year. And so, you know, hopefully we'll continue to get that extraordinary aid and that'll be good next year, but the million dollars won't be there. So I just, I appreciate, and I know that, you know, in the year or two, since you've got here, you've found some real efficiencies and you've done some, some really good work in terms of purchasing and other things where you've found savings. But those are really hard to replicate. So I just want us to understand that, you know, this is, I'm really glad you're able to balance this this year. But I still remember three years ago or four years ago, when I first got on the board, I still have a little bit of PTSD from those budgets because we really didn't have the money that we needed to run the schools in the way that we are accustomed to. So great that we're doing it again this year, but I do see that we're going to have challenges in the years to come.
The the year, right, the year of a year increase is reeling on the million dollars. We typically were under budget, the the expected extraordinary aid. We've been expecting one and three quarters, and then we were fortuitously last year. The fiscal 22, which affected our 21 actual number, were able to get in just over $3 million. So I'm still trying to be somewhat conservative, but we do, you know, kind of like to some of the points, you know, I think Michelle were, was alluding to was that, you know, it's, it's a fine line between, you know, over and under. So we want to try to be as close to to on budget as as that, but so, so the year of year change is really positive and helpful. I mean, hopefully the state will continue to, you know, increase that because obviously over time inflation, you mentioned some of the numbers I talked about in the past, it had gotten down to a 50, just over 50% proration of our award. So we submitted, let's say, a million, we got back 500,000. And now last year was up to over 90%. But if they kept that 400 million at the state level flat over time, we'd have the same thing declining percentages. So it will be interesting to see if they're able to, you know, at least keep up with inflation on that. But that was a very good point. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Daphna?
Thank you, Matt. Thanks for the presentation. Very comprehensive as always. And I just, I wondered, and I don't know if this is too soon, but are there new positions included in that, in the budget for next year?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. I guess we can go to the public questions. You know, generally, don't monitor the chat while it's giving the presentation. Typically, we'll just open it up. We do have one hand raised right now. Shakira? Hi, Shakira, can you hear me? Maybe it was inadvertent. Hi, Shakira, can you hear me?
You're looking muted.
Yeah, Shakira, you're muted.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
Did you have a question?
No, I accidentally hit it.
Oh, that's okay. I was all excited, you know, sometimes my budget presentation I've told can be not boring. I won't say boring, but anyway. Thanks.
My apologies.
No apology necessary.
Mr. Baldwin, I did see a question in the chat box. I don't know if he'd like to come off mic to ask himself. His name is, last name is, I think, Brownie, Mr. Brownie. It says, what was COVID supply charges?
Oh, I see the question right there. Thanks, Dr. Kelly. So so the COVID, so just flash, go back real quick and just. So that was last year, we tracked very closely. We tracked very closely. He's speaking of this line down here. And there was a little confusion. I shouldn't say confusion, not that I would say anyway, but, you know, you, you, it was very important for us to track our actual COVID expenses for a lot of reasons, to not miss any grant opportunities and to in secondarily to track our, to know what we were spending. And I, and only after was the sense, although we did tell our budget managers that this wasn't necessarily a COVID fund, it was like created money, but it was there to track some of the various things. HVAC, we put in touchless faucets. We put in various improvements with our HVAC, masks would go in here, sanitizers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that was what the question was about. Did I miss anything more detailed about that question?
Yes, he just added, will you be discussing mask mandates tonight? No, because this is the budget workshop.
It is a hot topic, I hear.
And and we will be addressing it shortly.
Right. Oh, no problem, Mr. Brownie. Apologize.
Yes.
No, of course not. So that was really all we had on the agenda, unless there's any other questions out there in the public.
Yes, we can take public comment.
I mean, oh, Dr. Rose is asking also about the mask.
No, 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 but we can take public comment, right? We usually allow public comment for any item.
She has her hand raised, so. Hi, Dr. Rose.
Hi, hi, everyone. First of all, I want to thank everybody. The changes at the school this year have really made a huge difference. I really appreciate the hard work of everybody. I appreciate all the activities that have gone on. The teachers have been great. I've really been thrilled. I've seen a big difference. So I did want to make a comment about a mask mandate. It's, I'm a little nervous. It's a little controversial, but I'm going to let you know my opinion on it since I have three kids at the school. It's a little bit as Dr. Rose, a little bit as Mom Rose. Anyway, I wanted to support a change to mask optional coming in March, when the governor has said we're allowed to do that. And so I have a couple of reasons for that. You know, although I really support the AP and the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC, I support the recommendations in general, for sure. Their recommendations have to include all types of situations. And our situation is a highly vaccinated population with a lot of anxiety. And I really feel like the high vaccination rate decreases the benefit of the masking and the high anxiety increases the downside for students. Secondly, it's exciting that it's becoming more and more clear that the higher quality masks are able to protect individuals from other individuals, which wasn't necess, other individuals who aren't wearing masks. And that wasn't necessarily believed earlier. That was a new CDC statement that came out. I think the N95s have read 86% effective. And I also think the benefit of the lower quality masks aren't, you know, isn't that clear? So I think that then you have maybe in some situations, you have more downside than upside. I also think masks don't solve the problem. Vaccines solve the problem. And I think this is a really great opportunity to sort of incentivize vaccines. If we can decide really soon what we're going to do in March, maybe we can, you know, like, first of all, make the announcement, tell people, hey, you know, masks are becoming optional. Make sure you get that booster. Make sure you get your child vaccinated, that kind of thing. I think masks are harder for some people than others, for some children than others, you know, developmentally disabled children. I think it's, it's much harder for them to learn clearly for hearing impaired. My brother's hearing impaired. He needs lips. I don't, I don't know how he does it, you know, when he's turned away, he doesn't hear a word I say. So, you know, for hearing impaired kids, I think that's really hard for kids who have to go to a speech that can make a big difference.
Okay, um, thank, thank you, Dr. Rose. If you could just wrap it up.
Yeah, sure, sure. And I think it's just made it for gym and sports and the arts more difficult.
Yep.
So anyway, thank you.
Okay, are there any other comment?
Sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Rose. So I would just say again, the the board found out about this at the same time everyone else did on Monday. We, like every decision during the pandemic, we will consult with our health and safety team, which includes the Princeton Health Officer, Dr. Grosser, and the School Physician, Dr. Helmrich. And we will be guided by the data. The district will be sending out additional information this week. So please be patient with us. The health and safety of our students and staff is the paramount, has and will be the paramount priority for us. And again, will be guided by our medical team.
Thank you. There are no more questions that I see.
Okay, so I guess we can motion to adjourn? And go in a closed session, actually.
Motion to go into closed session or anything?
Okay, can I get a motion? Brian, second, Jean. Oh, Susan, I should have done you. Next time, Susan.
We need to say the purpose.
Matt's going to read that.
I'm going to read that right now.
We're a fine tuned machine.
Who is the motion?
Brian.
And the second.
Jean.
Thank you. Resolve that the Board of Education approved the closed session resolution, whereas NJSA 10412 allows for a public body to go into closed session during a public meeting. And whereas the Board of Education, the Princeton Public Schools, has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from pub, from the public. And whereas the minutes of the closed session will be released when the need for confidentiality in accordance with NJSA 10412 no longer applies. And whereas the regular meeting in this Board of Education will be adjourned from closed session with no action taken. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Princeton Public Schools will go into closed session for the following reason. As outlined in NJSA 10412, to be discussed negotiations.
Do we have to take a?
I'll just call a roll call from here. Daphna?
Yes.
Susan?
Yeah.
That's me.
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Mar?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Michelle? Okay. I did send the link.
Okay.
I believe.
Thank you for everyone for attending. Our next meeting is February 22 at 7:30. So take care, stay well.